Start the meeting this evening with, it's the second public hearing on the five-year capital investment program. We previously held a meeting on May 2nd, and this is the second hearing on the five-year capital investment plan. And basically, it's a state, this is regulated per state statute. We're going to hold two public hearings. The five-year capital budget program is just a guide. It doesn't mean that it's etched in stone. If the city manager would like to add anything to the capital plan, discussion?
I have all the department heads here. If there's any questions, this addresses each department within the organization. A five-year plan, as the mayor said, is a guidance document governed by statute. The cover page describes how and why we use it. If you turn into the pages, you're going to see there's something there for the Public Works Department, the Police Department, including a long-range vehicle replacement schedule, dispatch replacement reserve fund as well, Fire Department, the municipal building, the city beautification plan, and moving into the enterprise budgets. This is a target. It's not carved in stone by having a capital investment plan. It makes us eligible for applying for certain grants, and our current one was renewed in early May of 2021. So should the council decide to approve this tonight, we'll be right on target. And as I mentioned, the department heads are here. If anybody has any questions.
Does anybody on the city council have any questions on this plan? It's been there, oh, go ahead.
Would the proposed water tower be part of the five-year plan?
The water tower is actually voter-approved, and that is not part of the five-year plan because that's a little bit separate.
Separate, okay.
Okay. Questions from anyone in the audience regarding the plan? This is the second hearing. This has been, this has been on our website since, I think, April for the, for the public to view, and copies have been available here at the municipal building. I guess if there are no questions, we'll close the second public hearing on the five-year capital investment plan, and we'll call the regularly scheduled Newport City Council meeting to order at 6:34. All members of the city council are present. Others include James Johnson, clerk treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our city manager. The next item would be to approve the minutes of May 16th, 2022. An entertainer motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the council minutes of 16th May, 2022.
A motion made by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vashaw. Discussion on the minutes. Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item is comments by members of the public, and the first person that we have is John Wilson. He wanted to make a statement.
Yep. It's a short statement. The voters in Newport voted for me to look out for their best interest. Three weeks ago, I feel I let both the voters and myself down when I abstained from a vote instead of doing the right thing and voting no. This action has bothered me for the last three weeks, and for this I offer my apology for not standing up for the voters and myself. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one on public comment is Pam Lads and its executive sessions.
Yes. At the last meeting, there was an executive session scheduled, and as usual, it appeared to be about a staff members evaluation or something similar. What it turned out to be was a significant pay raise for members of the city, the municipal building. I'm not discussing that part of it, but as a process, that is totally wrong. To imply that it's one thing when it was clearly something else is basically dishonest, and I would really like to know how that happened.
It was an executive session to discuss personnel.
Yeah, it doesn't say that, though.
I don't have my agenda.
And there was no vote at the end. It did not mention any possibility of a vote either, and nor did it say there was at the end of the last. And there was a vote, and it was a very significant issue. That does not seem like an appropriate form of transparency for any of us, and I'd like some certainty that that's not going to happen again.
Well, it was listed as an executive session for personnel, and personnel matters are discussed in executive session. And when you go into an executive session, you can either come out and take action or not take action. The council chose to take action when they came out. I mean, you can have action, you can have no action. You can have an executive session listed on an agenda, you can have it either just the executive session for personnel, and you can either take action or not take action. And so it was a personnel discussion. It was a personnel discussion for the city employees.
Clearly, we need to stay here for executive sessions in the future because that did not come across as transparent or honest.
There was, a question was asked by the press whether we thought action would be taken, and I wasn't sure at the time whether there was. There can always be action taken after an executive session. The press constantly asks, are you going to be taking action tonight or not? And, and, and I answered, I do not know at that time because I wasn't sure if we were going to take action, but you can.
When it's a issue that's clearly going to have an impact on those of us who are residents of this city, it would be appropriate to have a little more importable opportunity for that than to make a major decision in that way.
Okay, duly noted.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the five-year capital investment program.
Just another comment.
Nope, Mr. Ward's going to do his underwater sewer because we're having discussions on the water and sewer. And I don't need to be told when there's other comments.
I wrote it, so I didn't want to get me the one who got screwed for.
Oh, okay.
Slap.
No, because I asked him specifically. Okay. The next item is the approval of the five-year capital investment program, and at this time I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the five-year capital investment plan on 6 June 2022.
Motion made by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
What's second?
Seconded by Ms. Pedersen to approve the five-year capital investment plan. Oh, no, they're coming in, okay. Any discussion on that?
Does that include, does that embrace our taxes, does this end with?
Okay. Okay, the next item is the North Country Union High School facility naming request. This is just a guide. It's a guide during the budget process. We have Chris DeYoung, principal, here to explain the request. Any other questions?
Wendy McGilvery, the board member, is going to be presenting the request.
Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hi.
Opposed?
Wendy McGilvery, I'm the Newport City representative for the high school junior high.
Ayes have it. Motion carries.
April 2021, we had some members of the community who approached us looking to name facilities at the school after a member of the community. We didn't have a process in place at the time to approve and really vet those sorts of requests, so we started the process of having a committee, setting up rules, forms, meetings, and making sure that everything was handled in an appropriate way going forward when someone comes to us with such a request. The first request that came to us was to name the varsity soccer field at the high school after a member of the community, and we followed our process. We did everything. We had some really enthusiastic supporters, and the field happens to be the field of Crosswood Proudty that is owned by the city of Newport, not by the school. We're not looking to name the part of land after anyone. We're looking at naming the vars, the North Country varsity soccer field. So if the soccer field moves, the name would move with it. But because the land is currently owned by Newport City, we wanted to make sure that we had your approval for the process and to assign the name of Jose Batista Field. We've got letters of recommendation of 40 years of service and commitment to the sport and to our community from Mr. Batista, and if you have any questions about what he's done for the area, we have some people here who's willing to speak to it. But we just, as a board, decided that the right thing to do would be to come to the council as well to make sure that it was going to be okay with you, that the field, whatever location it is currently owned by Newport City, can be known at the high school as Jose Batista Field.
Will there be a sign going up on the actual field itself?
No. In the intent, yes.
I guess the only thing I found kind of interesting is when I read it in the paper, and the council had no indication of what was going on, and it was city property. It just kind of took me for a loop. You know, when I read how your, how this high school board went ahead and approved, you know, renaming a field which is city property without even giving any indication to the city council, you know, of what was being discussed, what was, you know, possibly going to come to before the board. So I guess I was kind of taken when I opened up the newspaper in the morning and I read, oh. And so that's my only concern a little bit about the process.
And I don't want you to think that the whole process, and it took so long for us to do anything behind anyone's back, it was really making sure that as these requests come forward in the future, that we have the right process in place, and that we have the right people involved, and that we have something that, that doesn't just mean anybody can come in and say this, this chair is now named after this person, right? So it wasn't about the particular field for quite, quite a while, for a long part of the process, and we also had to approve the person to make sure that we were going to go ahead with it. So once all of that happened, this, this meeting and this discussion was brought up several times. The newspaper doesn't always catch everything, but it was always the intent to, to make sure that, that we came to the city because we do understand that this particular part of the school that is used by the school is not owned by the school. But again, if the field moves, the name would move with the field. The intent is that the varsity soccer field for North Country High School is named after Jose Batista.
Have some other questions?
I guess my only question is, does the city have any process in place that determines what gets named when?
Well, that's a good question. As far as I know, and maybe Jim is good to respond to this too, as the city historian, what I was told is that the parks that we have are named after the people that donated it, donated the land. You have Palmelo Park, you have Gardner Park, you have Proudty Beach. So I don't know, you know, this is the first time since I've been here that we've been approached by this type of request.
There is a field at Gardner Park named after Gary Row.
So the president has been set.
Right.
And I think we.
He was a resident of the city. That's the difference, too. Mr. Batista is not a resident of the city, which doesn't make one, you know, one way or the other, but Gary was involved with the youth, I know, for many years at the softball. And of course, Gardner Park was named because Gardner donated whatever, and then Palmelo donated that piece of land where the, where the railroad station was, of course.
The only difference here is that Joe had been at this for 40 years, and the high school has used that field ever since the school has been in existence.
They have, okay.
And I don't think there's any set policy. I've never heard of him.
We formed a committee that set a good tone for any precedent, and granted, I did my homework and went back and found the minutes for when it approved the Gary Row field. So that obviously set you right. That set the precedent for the city. Ours is much stricter. And, and to speak on, to Wendy's point, that when we went through this entire process, it started with, we wanted to name something for Joe, and we had a discussion internally when we said, okay, what is that going to be? And we want, we want to approach you on the varsity field at this time. That's where the varsity field lies. So, you know, I'm sorry you were blindsided, but you were blindsided for nothing because it didn't really, we weren't talking about that field at the time. It was just a name. So we got approval from the school board, and we talked about a couple different locations, but for us, the varsity field means a lot to a lot of people, and Joe put his time in for 40 years, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I don't want to, it's not, I don't want to be rude, but I'm probably the only person here who doesn't know who you are. Can you tell me who you are?
My name is Anthony Moza.
Okay. Oh, I know you dead, huh? Okay. Got it.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But, yeah, so I mean, I think that, you know, what we set, and we would love to supply you with that, that process, because I think that can help with anybody having a request for anything in the city looking forward, is what, what we established. So I, I don't know if Chris, Chris and Wendy have it with him, but we can definitely afford that.
I think if the, if the field moves, Anthony, they play somewhere else, the name goes with it.
That's, that's the intention.
Go ahead. Yeah, that's.
Not a problem.
Right. Okay, other questions? Comments from anybody? Then I guess we would need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that the varsity soccer field, wherever it may be in future, be named the Joe Batista Soccer Field.
Motion made by Mr. Charbonneau. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vashaw. Discussion. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very appreciated.
Okay, the next item, the water and sewer rates, and B, and we want to continue discussion on that. I will turn it over to the city manager to kind of go over some of the, there were questions raised at the last meeting, and we'll let her go through the various answers to hopefully answer the questions that were raised. Then I will open it up for other folks.
At the last meeting, council had requested a response from the city auditor. The city auditor declined that invitation, saying it's really not his job to get into a debate with taxpayers. So what we did instead was generate the memo that's been attached. There's extra copies here in case anybody would like some. And this is in response to the questions that were raised. Happy to read this unless there are others who want to take one of these.
Do you have some more copies?
I can, let me just, all right, let me just, let me just make a couple more copies.
Take some more copies, please.
I'm just going to read this, or I could just read them. on our water and sewer rates because we haven't had one since 2016, and because rates have gone up, expenses have gone up. To that end, we made a proposal that's based on the former model that was generated with a water and sewer committee, and people questioned why we would do that, and again, we responded with a model that we thought was responsible. More questions came forward, so we had a conversation with our auditor to try to answer those questions, and I distributed a memo, which I'm now going to board everybody and read through it. So these are things that went into considering why and how we were going to do a rate increase. Again, not changing the model, the structure that we had in place in 2016, but increasing those rates at a responsible level that we thought was nominal, given again that there has not been an increase since 2016 and knowing that we're going to be taking on more debt in the future. So here we go. These are elements that went into consideration. The city water and sewer funds are proprietary funds, meaning that they are supposed to be self-sufficient, run similar to a business with significant amount of support being from fees and charges. Over time, since these funds began, the unrestricted equity balance in each of the funds has been built up to 246,000 in the sewer fund and 707,000 in the water fund as of June 30th, 2021. Over the course of the last three years, the funds have operated at a loss, where the equity over this period has been reduced by 180,000 in the water fund and 945,000 in the sewer fund. At this rate, the sewer fund could be operating at a deficit in the next two to three years with costs anticipated to rise across the board with no, if there were no rate increase. The last rate increase was six years ago. Since then, the city no longer receives fees from Leach Eight, and the sewer fund losses have grown on an annual basis while costs across the board have gone up. Revenues over the same time period have not grown, usage has remained fairly steady, and growth in usage is not anticipated. Cash in the funds is made up of reserves for a future water tower replacement and not available for operations and future debt service payments. Over the course of the last few years, the water and sewer funds have needed cash sources from other funds in order to operate and pay down its obligated debt service. There was a slight improvement in cash inflows in 2020 due to debt obligations being put on hold by the state for COVID purposes. In 2021, there was an inflow of cash from other funds of 270,000 in the sewer fund and 90,000 in the water fund to fund operations and debt service. There are deferred maintenance items and capital projects coming up that would require a large amount of financing, further impacting cash flow and high maintenance costs for permitting that typically would not be financed. With these projects becoming more pressing and needed in the next year, it is more likely than not that an even larger rate increase all at once would be required, if not steadily built in over time for the next few years. And that's really, for me, that sums it up quite nicely. And again, I want to stress that the rates, we posted them on the website this morning, are going up a very small amount. I think we figured 3% in water, and Jennifer Hopkins is very quick to correct it was more than 3% in sewer, but the rates have been consistent each time this has been presented to the council. So the numbers that you see on the chart that's got the letter H are the rates that we are proposing. And other than that, I, I don't have much more to offer.
Council, before I open it up to folks, John Ward, which wanted to.
Might discuss the water fund first, because I think that's the fund that really doesn't need an increase. At the end of, at the start of this year, you had $568,000 in cash on hand. Is that correct? I got it out of the annual report, so I assume it's correct. Your, your net loss was 61,900 for last year, according to your report. So is that correct?
61, I thought the audit report page has 61.
It's page 86 of the annual report.
I had the actual audit report.
Let's hope they match.
A little different.
Yeah, let's hope they match. Page 86, Paul, the one I'm on, on the annual report.
I'm not looking at the annual report.
It's, it's a fund financial statements. I think it was due, but I think the report was done by the auditors, not the city. If you look in page 86, I think you'll, you'll agree that that's correct.
You're right, 61,800. I'm sorry, John, I just wanted to.
No, that's fine. No, I, I agree.
You always get put into there, they're cut and copied, you know, I just want to read.
Yes, it's very easy to get confused.
Yeah.
I'm confused most of the time. So it seems to me, just looking at the cash on hand, and by the way, the cash increased last year, you don't need an increase in the water fund, at least this year, because you've got about eight years before that, going at the current rate, that that surplus would be deleted. So I, I make that point because I think you do need an increase in the sewer fund to avoid, as I think the city manager said, to having a huge increase one year. You'd rather have small increases as you go along. So when I look at the sewer fund, let's just say for argument's sake, and the council will get all the real numbers, so you don't need to take my numbers for it because you're in charge. But roughly, if you had a 10% increase in the revenue, that'd be over $100,000. So that's a, that's a good start on not having any problems three or four years down the road. So I, I looked at, luckily, I have two bills from the last quarter, and one bill, I used 229 gallons of metered water, and as everybody knows, the sewer gets based on your metered water. And so my bill was $102. My parents, who are very extravagant with water, not really, but they used 8,439 gallons. Their bill was $145. So the gallon difference, the per gallon charge, is about a half a penny per gallon. That's not very much, a half a penny per gallon. Think of what, when you buy something, a half a penny per gallon. So I'm suggesting that for the sewer fund, we'll use the 10%, raising $100,000. So that would mean for sure you'd be, still have added money going into the sewer fund next year, because your, I think your deficit was $40,000 this year. Of course, it wasn't the cash deficit, so you had surplus cash, your cash increase in the sewer fund due to depreciation. So I'm suggesting that when you look at the sewer fund, and as Jennifer knows, and some people on the table know, I was never a fan of the, of the new way we did, did the water sewer billing. I thought it hurt single-family homeowners, but I'm not here to change that or argue about that. But I am here to say that this, when you have to increase the rate, I'm going to suggest a way to do it. So for the, for the sewer people, those that are not metered, let's say you do 10% because we're going to, I'm assuming you need $100,000. You'll, you'll decide if you need $100,000 or not. I won't decide that. And as everybody knows, the sewer gets based on your metered water. And so my bill was $102. My parents, who are very extravagant with water, not really, but they used 8,439 gallons. Their bill was $145. So, the gallon difference, the per gallon charge, is about a half a penny per gallon. That's not very much, a half a penny per gallon. Think of what, when you buy something, a half a penny per gallon. So, I'm suggesting that for the sewer fund, we'll use the 10%, raising $100,000. So that would mean for sure you'd be, still have added money going into the sewer fund next year. Because your, I think your deficit was $40,000 this year. Of course, it wasn't the cash deficit, so you had surplus cash, your cash increase in the sewer fund due to depreciation. So I'm suggesting that when you look at the sewer fund, and as Jennifer knows, and some people on the table know, I was never a fan of the, of the new way we did, did the water sewer billing. I thought it hurt a single-family homeowner. But I'm not here to change that or argue about that. But I am here to say that this, when you have to increase the rate, I'm gonna suggest a way to do it. So for the, for the sewer people, those that are not metered, let's say you do 10%. Because we're gonna, I'm assuming you need $100,000. You'll, you'll decide if you need $100,000 or not, I won't decide that. Maybe not only half that, but you'll make that decision. But the point is, you use a percentage, 10%, let's say, for, for $100,000. And then, what you wanna do for the metered people is you wanna increase their metered rate to raise 10% of the revenue. And you have, you have that information. You all, it's easily on the computer downstairs, you can easily get it. You know the number of metered gallons you're charging for sewer. So you could increase the metered rate to, to gain your 10% revenue. That's, assuming, assuming that's what we need. So for the fixed users, you get a 10% charge, increase in your fixed charge, and for the water meter users, you get a 10% increase in their metered rate. I think that helps most people. It, it makes the system a little more fair. In other words, I think currently, your system is biased towards landlords, multi-users. This doesn't change your algorithm, it just, I think addresses a little better how you should be, how you should increase the revenue. Because that's what you're gonna wanna do, increase the revenue. So, all I'll say is, look at increasing the revenue by a fixed percentage on your non-metered users, and a percent, a fixed percentage, which you can easily calculate how much you need, on the per gallon charge. And so you, you generate the revenue you need, and I think that you'd make the system a little, I think, a little fairer for the homeowner. Thank you.
As far as the way it's calculated, the original proposal... Were you still manager when that came, or no? Remember, the original proposal didn't get, didn't get us anywhere. This at least got us a little, it kinda brought that bar down, right? From what you were talking about, the landlords to the single homeowner, it kinda brought it closer. It's not perfect, I know, because the original one wouldn't have paid for anybody to meter, who wanted to meter. And that was the problem there. I remember the committee that presented the original one. Am I wrong, Jennifer? I'm just trying to say, I brought it closer.
You, you, I, I feel you're wrong, but that's my opinion. I also disagree with John that the rates are unfair. So, you know, I obviously stand somewhere where other people aren't standing, but that's fine.
I just thought it brought it more equitable.
It is, it is, it is more equitable. Until every time it gets metered, it will never be fully equitable.
Right, oh, that I, I do, that, yeah, that's, that's true.
I was gonna go in and calc, and do some work of my own, calculation of my own, because I could, I'm capable of doing it, just barely, but I'm capable of doing it. But you no longer track, as I stopped and saw Stacy, you no longer track the number of living units per meter, per meter station. And I think if you spent, if someone on the city staff spent the time to look at it in detail, taking seven or eight apartments at random, and looked at what they paid for water, and what single-family homes paid for water and sewer, I think it would probably be obvious to you, we, would be, I think it would be. Now, I can't prove it, because I've got the numbers, I take that time to do it, because I'm lazy. That's what you, that's what you guys are here for. But I think if you looked at it in, in detail, you'd see, geez, I do think it's a little bit biased towards the multifamily units. Now, I may be wrong, I'm happy if you could prove me wrong, I don't think I am, but I still think what I'm suggesting, the way you increase your revenue, if you do it the way I suggested with the fix on the non-metered, and adjust the gallon rate, I think you'd all be happy in the end. At least, I think it would be.
I have the impression that multifamily units are all metered now. Am I correct? And then they're paying per gallon, which makes it act more, which makes them pay for what they're using.
Right, but remember, Paul, I've got a four-unit apartment house. I pay a metered rate, and I pay it per gallon. And then, the, the fixed charge doesn't get charged again, the way I understand, understand the algorithm, maybe I can be corrected. They have to use almost the amount of water, the average rate for, for a family, before they get the other, the next fixed charge.
That's true.
So, so I'm just asking, if you looked at that in detail, and you got the, you guys got the information, you could do it. Take a little bit of work, but that's what you're here for. You could actually see if I'm right or wrong. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't think I'm gonna be wrong. Pick them at random, don't cherry pick, and, and calculate it out, and I think I might be right. And maybe I'll be wrong, if I'm wrong, I'll just say, Jennifer, you're right again. But I don't think I am.
Then I'll give you credit, John.
Thank you.
Um, yes?
Could I ask Mr. Ward a question? Is that possible, about his proposal?
I can't hear you.
I, I said, can I ask Mr. Ward a question about his proposal?
Well, my proposal's not to change the structure they're using, because I don't wanna cause an uproar, on Jennifer and the council and everybody else. But I'm suggesting that if they get the revenue increased the way I suggested, it would be a little bit of a loaf. It would, I think it would make things a little fairer. Can I guarantee it? I can't guarantee anything, I don't have the numbers and...
But I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So...
Well, excuse me, I'm sorry, I just, I'm sorry. I'll step back.
Yes, yes, you can. It was like, yes.
Thank you. I'm trying to do the right thing here and obey the rules. So, um, the question that I have for you, Mr. Ward, is that, you know, as a, as a resident, kinda living paycheck to paycheck, I recognize the fact that on my water and sewer bill, sewer is two-thirds of my bill, and water is one-third. And so if you're talking about raising my sewer rates by 10%, that's gonna result in an overall rate increase on my bill of approximately 7%, which is even more than what the city is looking to do right now.
Right, so, so the 10%, I picked out of the hat. Because now, like, the $400,000 loss every year, and I know most of that's from, from depreciation, depreciation of about $5,000, so it's not, it's not a cash loss, but it's a loss. So you've gotta address it. So maybe 10% is not right. The, the people up there, the city manager will decide, but maybe it's only 8%, maybe it's only 5%. But the point is, the sewer fund needs the revenue, I don't believe the water fund does. And I'm all for the minimum that they need, but, but they better need some money over time. And I'd rather see a 3% increase for three years in a row than a 10% increase, but that's up to these people. But the sewer, the water fund does not need an increase, the way, the way, when I look at the numbers. And so that would make it easy to increase the sewer fund a little more this year, because you got no water fund increase. That's all I'm trying to point out. If you, if you increase the water fund and sewer fund, when the water fund doesn't need it, you've really, you're not helping the homeowner out too much, really. The water fund doesn't need it, the sewer fund does. That's, that's really the reason I came. And, and my little dig to do it, to do it my way, to increase the rate, the gallonage rate, instead of the fixed rate on the meter users. That's all. Does that make sense to you?
Oh, it does. At the end of the day, whether it's coming out of the water fund or coming out of the sewer fund, it's coming out of my checkbook.
Yes, but the sewer fund has to have money to operate.
No, I understand. But, to me, what I care about is the amount of money coming out of my checkbook, and how the town then takes it and disperses it between water and sewer is somewhat meaningless to me. I just worry about what's coming out of my check.
They, they have the responsibility to make sure that the sewer fund and the water fund are separate.
Right.
They're not supposed to commingle the funds.
Years ago, that happened, but not anymore.
Not anymore.
No, I understand, but that is the town accounting, you know? I mean, I'm gonna write my check for whatever my total is, and...
No, there's no commingling whatsoever now. I mean, that did happen many, many years ago, and that, the fund straightened out, they ended up straightening out.
So, Mr. Man, I have additional questions in a general sense, if you want me to wait until another turn.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I wanted to hear from Ms. Dogen. Can you give me a percentage increase in, in a number? Because there's been a lot of confusion going back to forth. And the language that you have used has been 3% rounded to the nearest number, but my math is not showing that it's 3%. My math is showing that it's something darn close to double that amount, and that it ends up being 5.3% overall increase in my bill.
I'm gonna give this to you, and this was in the packets, this is the red line strikeout. So you can see the actual numbers, and I'm happy to make more copies of this if anybody...
I do have the actual numbers.
Okay.
But I just wanna hear from you what the percentage is.
So what we did is, we did a 3% rounded up to the nearest number, to the nearest whole number.
And I wanna know what that resulted in in terms of a percentage.
I think that it's 3% on the water, and it's a little more on the sewer, because we needed to get...
And I wanna know what that...
Excuse me, let her, let her at least try to answer the question, please. Don't interrupt anyone, please, let her try to answer the question.
Jennifer, do you know what the percentage is on the sewer?
Um, I didn't bring that stuff up to you, to the council last time.
Yeah.
It averages after being an overall 5% if you're a water and sewer user. So I would say it's about 7%. But unfortunately, I couldn't pick up that paper.
That's 3%, it's still 3% rounded up on the water, and the target is 3% rounded up on the sewer. Jennifer has done the math and said that the sewer is closer to 5%. I wanna point out, the reason that is, is because one of the biggest complaints we've gotten from users is that the odd numbers, they have a hard time adding it up. So we moved those numbers up to even numbers to help people with their addition. It's that simple.
So, can I speak now? Ms. Dogen, what you are telling the public right now is not accurate. And I take issue with this, because I believe that the taxpayers need to be informed truthfully as to what these rate increases are. The sewer is going up, I believe, on one of the components by 7% and on another component by 9%. And then when you add that in with the 3% of the water, the overall increase is going to be 5.3%. And you are trying to hold out to the public that the rate increase target is 3% for both sewer and water, and that is not true.
This form that we have proposed has not changed since we submitted this, these numbers have been consistent. So I'm not trying to mislead anybody, what I'm trying to do is present something that is responsible and a small increase, so that we can continue to operate this very important utility on behalf of the city of Newport, knowing that we're gonna be incurring additional debt. These numbers have never changed. There is nothing duplicitous here. Obviously, there's people that are gonna decipher this to their best advantage, but again, these numbers are consistent every time that we've presented them. It's up to the water commissioners to decide what they wanna do with this.
So, Ms. Dogen, it's not that these numbers are going to be interpreted to someone's best interest. These numbers, it's a simple mathematical calculation, where you take the new rate, you subtract the old rate, and you take that difference, and you divide it by the old rate to get your percentage increase. That is a simple calculation, and when one does that, it is nowhere near 3%. Nowhere near 3%. And I would have hoped that the, that the council and my city manager would have done that simple mathematical calculation and been able to give me this answer. If you give me a few moments, I will do it again, because unfortunately, I don't have the paper with me where I wrote the results on. For some reason, I got a fresh copy in here. But it is nowhere near 3%, and I think it's incredibly deceptive that the city is trying to tell the taxpayers that it's 3% when it's something much, much higher than that.
And if you look at my original memo, you will see that it's, that I say is 3% rounded up to the nearest whole number.
And I still, ma'am, find that to be deceptive, because when the rate increase is double or maybe triple, that's not something that the average person would assume is rounded up to the nearest whole number.
And once again, these numbers then have shown, on this draft, have been consistent. There's nothing deceptive here, and I'm, I'm not gonna engage anymore.
I just would, would, I, I do have my calculations of the percentages. So, on sewer, the base rate was $4.72, proposed to go to $5, that's a 6% increase.
6%.
3% would be $4.86. And the current variable rate of $3.26 going up to $3.50, that is a 7.4% increase. 3% would be $3.36, a 10 cent increase. But can I ask a, a problem I have? I looked at these things, we have, we're going up to a whole dollar, but we've got $2.90, we've got $2, we've got $5, and we have $3.50. So what the hell is a whole number? I'm sorry, I did not really mean to swear, but I got a problem. You know, I can't, I can't make those into whole numbers if you're rounding up the $2.81.2 3% right on the nose to $2.90. The next grouping on water, right on the nose to $2. But these are not on the nose, and I don't understand. You know, really, you know, if it is 3.26 and it's rounded up to the nearest whole dollar increase, then guess what? It shouldn't be $3.50, it should be $4.
Exactly. And if we did $4, what would the conversation be then?
So, so are we not...
Once again, the biggest complaint we have had from consumers is using these odd numbers, you know, 29.27, 6, 111.09. We were asked to remove those odd numbers, and that's what I've tried to do, is so that these, all of these numbers end in either a zero or a five, so it makes it easier for the consumer to understand.
So, can I just say, I think what we're, I think our, the disconnect here is the use of whole number, that we're not necessarily using whole numbers, which we all, they would all end in zero. We're just kinda like going to the most comfortable place, if that's, makes any sense. So I think we have, I think it's a language issue that we have, that whole numbers isn't probably the correct term to use. Because again, if it, like, the one that's $30.15, then we would go, if we're gonna do a whole number and round everything up, we'd be at $4, and that would be a problem, so...
Exactly.
Um, I think it's, I think we need to, I think the language needs to be worked on. I do believe that in the initial presentation, you know, it was 3% rounded up to the whole, whole number. Since that first presentation, there has been clarification. Jennifer went through the numbers, brought where we had discrepancies, that sewer was, really was more so. It's not that it's being constantly, I don't believe, repeated, that it's 3% across the board, that those corrections have been brought to the public attention and brought to council's attention.
I thought this issue was really important. A lot of people are worried about the increase, and I'm not saying that that's minor, but the process, to me, is really much, much more important. You know, when you look at the auditor's report, it gives you some information that will help you figure out whether or not an increase is necessary. And from what I've learned recently, cash flow is really important. You know, depreciation is listed in this net worth of what the water and sewer assets are worth, but really, nobody writes a check out to depreciation each year, it just happens, you know? Just the way, with our cars, they, they, they're not worth whatever you paid for them to begin with after a year, and sometimes they say it's not worth it when you drive them out. But nonetheless, the car's gonna go on for a long, long time, and when it comes again that you need a car, if you don't have, if you want a new car, if you don't have the $20,000 to buy one, you're gonna buy it over a period of time, and it's not gonna hurt you as much in any one year, you can probably pay it over five years, let's say, and it'll cost, you know, a fifth plus interest each year. So depreciation doesn't really help you with respect to what's the figure that you're down. The figure, so they, the auditor does a nice job for you of putting cash flow on page 87 of the last city report. You've included it, and it lets you know whether the, at least you've got a positive cash flow going. And you do have a positive cash flow going in both the sewer fund, I believe, and in the water fund. Your net increase in cash for the sewer fund was $85 last year, and your net increase in the water fund was $60,000, some... and your net increase in the water fund was sixty thousand some odd. So you know that at least you've paid all your bills and you got a little bit of cash left, and you're thinking, you know, you're looking pretty good. Uh, and that's been true, you've been positive in, in both the budgets that you list. And the strange thing is, they've got you as having a positive, uh, flow into your, um, into your, uh, water and sewage. And so that, when you add them all up at the end of the year, you've got a hundred and seventeen thousand sitting in your sewer fund, and you've got five hundred and sixty-eight thousand sitting in your water fund. Now, for some reason, when you do operations in your city budget that was prepared, it came out with a deficit of thirty-one thousand in water operation and a hundred and forty some odd in sewage. So you've got, you, you know, it depends upon where are you looking at? Are you looking at net assets? Are you looking at the cash flow statement? Or are you looking at your own actual figures for 2021? Because there are differences in each one of them. But the, the reality is that you're doing okay. Because when I look back to 2014, the water sewage total, uh, for your cash in that, those two funds together totaled about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So eight years ago, you were at three seventy total. Now you're at total for the two of them of six eighty-five. Uh, so each year, you sort of increment a little bit, you know? You make about sixty thousand or so, and you increment a little bit. So that's my analysis of the cash flow. And so I asked a series of questions because I sat down and for initially, I was totally disorganized about it. And then I tried to put my questions in order, and I sent a copy to you, and you said, suggested the auditor was coming. I didn't want him surprised, I wanted him to know about those questions. The first three, uh, the first three, really, to summarize, really says, did the auditor tell you this was a bad thing where you are right now? Did the auditor tell you to raise these rates? And I would submit to you that you haven't been told by the auditor that you should raise the rates. And then, and you might say, well, that's not his job. And there may never be a circumstance in which he says that.
It is not the auditor's job. The auditor is to audit the financial statements of the city of Newport. He is to be neutral, he is not to recommend rates, he is not to recommend anything. He presents the financial picture of the city of Newport. That's what any auditor does based on, you know, financial, um, gentry and the financial procedures of accounts, standard accounting principle.
Right, you didn't get it from the auditor. So then you have to figure out, where do I get, where do I get an idea in my head that the water rate should be going up? Well, I just explained to you the picture of your cash flow. You're paying your debts, you're paying your bills, um, do you need a, a rate increase? In addition, before you guys, so the cash flow looks, um, fairly decent to me. In addition, um, but my question to you guys, since I can't ask the auditor, is what do you want to know before you raise the rates? Do you want to see, um, somebody enumerate for you? Well, this is the reason we need to raise the rates. Labor is about, uh, you know, our labor costs are like, whatever it is, fifty thousand dollars. I'm just making up a number. But we're gonna raise it three percent next year, so therefore we need three percent of fifty thousand for labor. We need to buy a new, no matter what, we need to buy a new widget truck because we don't have one, and everybody, it's the state of the, state of the art, and we have to have one of those, and now it cost us twenty thousand dollars. But we're only gonna buy it and pay for it on time, so there's another four thousand we need. So what I'm suggesting is that you want to know, it seems to me, if you're commissioners, how much exactly can you predict that you're gonna need next year in terms of labor, in terms of, um, capital expenditures? Uh, and then, when all those things are added up for you and you know the total amount of increase you expect, you're gonna want to know, what, can the fund take care of it? The fund has a total of six hundred and eighty-five thousand in it. Can it take care of those increases or not? But that information has to come to you from the city manager. Not some generality about labor costs and material costs are going up, and we haven't had a rate increase for five or six years. That's not a basis for increasing. And that was the original basis that you had for why you would do the increase. But you want to know, what are the expenses expected for next year? Can we afford them from what we have in the fund? And then how much of a rate increase do we need to get? Is it gonna be two hundred thousand dollars more in expenses? Well, we probably could afford those. But how much of a water increase rate do you need? And how much of a sewage rate increase do you need to make up for the two hundred thousand dollars more expenses you expect next year? Um, so I'm, I'm submitting to you, that as water commissioners, you need to know what it is that's the increased sum that you're expecting, and then figure out what rate would correspond to that. I've explained to you how you can, you can buy something new, and it's not gonna be expensed all in the first year. You can spread it over a, a number of years, and therefore the impact in any one year isn't gonna be that great. I did want to know, uh, why the sewer fund in 2021, the comment that by the auditor is that you had a receivable from the general fund of only sixteen thousand, when the receivable the prior year was two hundred and eighty-six thousand. Do you know the answer to that, Laura?
I think that, uh, we had a land sale.
I'm sorry?
We, we sold a parcel of land, and I think we sold that for a hundred thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken. Does that sound familiar?
Does that account for the two eighty-six?
The land that was sold last year was up by CAS insurance. That was where they were gonna put the water tower. And that was sold. And that money had originally come out of the water fund to buy the land, if I recollect. And then we sold it because that wasn't the ideal location. The ideal location was where it was chosen to be. And so, yes, that would indicate money coming in from the sale. That's the only land that would be associated with the water fund that we sold last year. It was up by CAS insurance, up that knoll where the water tower originally was gonna be. But that was in the town of Derby, and it wasn't ideal.
So that was only a hundred thousand dollars?
No.
What about the hundred and sixty-six thousand more?
No, it was, it was a hundred and thirty something.
I think it was right around a hundred or a hundred and five.
I don't remember.
Yeah, I think, I'd have to go check my file. But it was closer to that.
But that's part of it.
And the rest?
Well, what happens is, they have to pay the principal on their loans. So that, that money has to come from somewhere. So you have to raise the revenue for it. It doesn't, the depreciation is a non-cash expense.
Right.
So it gets a little confusing. But they do, the way I look at it, they do need more money for the sewer fund. Like I said, I don't believe you need more money for the water fund. But if you're gonna avoid a huge increase down the road in the sewer fund, you need to increase the sewer fund. Maybe three percent's the right amount. Hopefully, you do it the way I suggested, you probably won't. But anyway, you do need more money in the sewer fund. And when you're running a business, what you'd like to do is to have the smallest increases possible. So probably three, three, three is better than ten, zero, zero. But that's the decision the city council needs to make based on, based on information the city manager gives. But I don't, you don't need to solve this problem in one year, is what I'm saying. Because the five hundred ninety-six, six thousand, five hundred and six thousand, sixty thousand is depreciation in the sewer fund, that's a non-cash expense. So you've got time to work it up, so you're doing the right thing. I think you need to increase the sewer fund. Sewer revenue, excuse me, sewer revenue. I don't believe you need to increase the water revenue, but you, if you look at the numbers, you'll decide that.
And then as far as cash reserves, if I wanna just interject, you, you have to have cash reserves. We had an unanticipated expense at the sewer plant that was how much? Was that this current year, this is current year, not last year?
Yep, uh, that was about, um, eighty-four thousand, there's another fifty thousand insurance reimbursement.
Yeah.
That happened.
But no, but that's why you have to have cash reserves. Same as at the water, water treatment, the arsenic. They had to replace some of the equipment that does the mixing because it was failing, and that could have caused a nightmare with the mixing of the, you know, the chemicals.
And your point, Paul, is excellent for the sewer fund because you only had a, a cash increase of about eighteen dollars, or sixty dollars.
Right.
So that, not the case for the water fund, but that's certainly the case for the sewer fund. Yeah, you need some more cash, you need some more revenue.
So one of the other things, um, Mr. Ward, is that we're gonna need to buy a new reservoir cover, and that reservoir cover is, um, gonna be close to four hundred thousand dollars. And those funds, um, should we be allowed to proceed, would very likely come from the reserves. So that's something that we have to consider. And I don't know that we want to drain those reserves that you're saying that we have that much. So again, it's another reason why we have advocated for three percent across the board, give or take, um, uh, the numbers are consistent so that we have the funds to be able to operate this system and that we don't impose an, an, a very high increment in an increase in the next year. I don't want to see that happen. We thought, uh, we thought this rate that we presented was modest. And with your water tower coming and the need to replace your reservoir cover, you've got some expenses that are coming up. We want to be situated to be able to manage that.
I hadn't finished.
Well, I'm gonna let you, I'm gonna cut you down in your time because I need to allow other people too, I can't.
Oh, I, I did want to mention one new thing that came up in what, um, Laura presented and we received Monday, uh, morning. And that is, she said that monies were being taken from other funds and put into water and sewage. The only other funds that I could think of were city funds that were being used, in other words, the regular general fund owned by the city, funds being moved into water and sewage back in, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. And I, I would like to know, because I've never heard it, and I've come to every one of the meetings almost, when did, when did the city council approve city general funds being transferred? And it's actually called a transfer, um, transfer from other funds? When did you approve that funds could go from the city into the water and sewage budget? Uh, the water and sewage fund? That seems to me to be a violation of what I expect from my city councillors as well as from my water commissioners. And if you were gonna borrow, you're gonna take money from one and transfer it to the other, why would the water commissioners not know about that happening? Did you know about it when it was happening in 2021? Yes, no? I never heard anybody presented to you that funds were gonna go from city.
Okay, let's, 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 okay, let's hear an answer, please.
I would say that that was a general ledger trans, uh, transaction that the auditors did. It's nothing that we would do, that's where it gets extremely complicated. And, uh, that's not something that we could, that's.
The auditors are constantly making year-end entries.
Exactly.
It's not as if the funds, right?
I, I think, and I'm, I'm not an auditor, I'm just a layperson. But all the monies collected from water sewer goes into the general fund. When they need money, it comes out of the general fund to pay the bills to the water and sewer fund. That's how it works. There's not, there's not three different checking accounts.
Paul was just saying that money shouldn't be commingled. I would certainly love it if there was a separate water sewage, uh, bank account so that we have, you know, real knowledge of what money was in there and what checks had been written on it, but we don't have that. And I'm just saying, you can't move, can't move money from the general fund. It says transfer, uh, from funds. And in other places, transfers were made back, other years, transfers were made back.
All the money goes into the general fund that's collected. If you've got an expense to pay any of the water sewer, it comes out of the general fund to pay the expense.
What I meant by commingling is the water fund.
If they want to have three separate checking accounts, fine, personally, I don't want that.
I don't, we don't need it. What I meant by commingling is the water fund is not supposed to prop up the sewer fund and vice versa. That happened years ago, where I can't remember. One of them was propping up the other one to the tune of many hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that's what's not supposed to happen.
And the city, the city's money, the general fund should not be propping up.
It's not propping up, no. All the money that is collected goes into one fund. Yeah, it's not propping up anything. You've got, it's like a clearinghouse. It's like anything, you've got a clearinghouse. The money goes into that one fund, and then it gets allocated. It's like businesses. They collect money into one fund, and then they allocate it to their expenses or where it's supposed to be. You don't have checking accounts for every single account, um, in the city. You don't have.
But I can't believe the auditor, without asking you, decides that he's going to move money from a general fund into water and sewage. And your, your city manager specifically says that money came from another fund. There's only two kinds of funds.
No, no, but if that.
I don't, I don't think he's moving general fund money into water. So he's taking money from the general fund, that is, water and sewer money, that happens to be in the general fund checking account, and moving it to the water and sewer.
Because when they receive money, they have codes for everything. Everything has a code, here. Well, what I was gonna show her was this, right here. Everything has a code. And that's where it gets allocated. So all the money coming in gets allocated to water and sewer, but it's through that general fund.
Mr. Mayor?
I think Stacy wants to speak.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, just so you know, in the general fund, we have what's called due-to, due-from accounts. That's where those monies sit until they go into the water fund or the sewer fund.
That's correct.
That's right. It's kinda like a clearinghouse, or, you know.
At the end of the year, if they make an adjustment, they're just taking money that belongs to water or sewer and moving it to the water.
Right.
So then, then I'm not, I won't worry about it anymore. You get about sixty thousand dollars extra, um, each year, um, in net cash. You're doing okay. And I would disagree with, um, John behind me. You're doing okay on, on a net basis. You really should look at all the numbers yourselves. I agree with that, and make a determination. But you should figure out what the expenses are first for, that are predicted to happen, how much of an increase that is, and then you should figure out what the water rate is. I haven't heard anybody say, well, you know, next year, we're gonna need a hundred thousand dollars more, three hundred thousand dollars more, five hundred thousand dollars more in these funds, and that's why.
Because they haven't worked on the budget yet. The budget process starts in November for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-three. That's when the budget process starts in November.
But you never look at that budget. That budget is made up by Laura Dolgan, and you don't vote on it.
It's never been voted on. Mr. Ward, have we have, we, we never voted on the water and sewer budget in your tenure because it was an enterprise fund. You, you budget for what you need to operate.
Ask me, yeah, if you ever.
Yes, that's correct. It's a city manager's responsibility to, um, make sure that it's funded properly. And the city council looks at it. But that's why I came tonight, because I don't, I don't wanna harp on it. The water fund doesn't need more money. But you may decide it does. But that's a council decision. Um, and when Laura puts her, puts it, when you increase the rates, you'll decide that now, or whenever you increase the rates. You're gonna increase the rates before your budget meeting, I'm guessing. That's why you're having all these meetings. So it'll be a fait accompli when it comes to the budget. You'll have already decided what you want to raise and spend.
Why don't you wait until the budget is formulated, and then you can see what you'll need? Because you really should have that.
Okay, we've gone back and forth enough, I mean, we need to move on. Melissa, who's a council member, has been patiently waiting. I'm gonna get her on the floor.
Absolutely.
So having mowed this over for the last few weeks, um, I understand, it's the way I understand you. We, we do have a fairly healthy reserve in the water and sewer funds. It seems to be a pretty good reserve. And we do have expenses coming up for the water folks, um, for the water fund. All things considered, though, I think that at this point, and this is just, again, my personal opinion and taking into account, um, just everything that's going on and sort of inflation rates, and people working and paying bills, and things like that. I personally feel that we could probably handle not increasing. I personally feel that we could probably handle not increasing rates right at this time and work it into next year's budget and we just go from August to our next, you know, our next billing, not our next billing cycle, but not increase rates at this time. I think, you know, weighing the needs of the water sewer enterprises and the needs of our users, I, I'm comfortable that we have enough money that should something come up right now and I'm comfortable not raising them right at this point. I know we have to, to, obviously to meet expenses and things, but I just don't feel that right now is the time to do it.
Is it pertinent? I mean, we need to move on.
I, I, I understand that you need to move on, but I think we, as taxpayers, needs to be heard as well. This is money coming out of our pocket.
But people are starting to repeat themselves from previous meeting and so.
I'm not repeating myself.
Okay, I'm gonna give you a little leeway and then I'm just gonna stop it if I feel you're repeating yourself from previous two meetings or whatever.
In the last meeting, you stated that you use the expenses associated with the equipment that the town uses and you divide them between the roadwork at one-third and the water and sewer at two-thirds. When we asked you as to why it is that you chose those numbers, you said that you had to rely upon the expertise of your city workers, namely, I guess, Mr. Burnier, if I have that name correct. My question is, that heavy equipment, each, every piece of it has a time clock in it. Is a log being kept as to how many hours are being used on road versus how many hours are being used on water and sewer? If the answer is no, I would highly suggest you should do that rather than simply taking an arbitrary number out of thin air. Then it's nothing better than a best guess estimate. Number two, in the annual report under sewer plant expenses, I was curious as to what plant water usage fee is. Can someone define that?
That is state of the mind, am I correct, Paul? Plant water, we have to pay a fee to the state, is that the fee I think she's referring to?
The plant water is the water that we use. We use domestic water at the wastewater plant throughout our process of treatment.
So when you have the plant water usage fee, who are you paying that fee to?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Go ahead, Stacy.
The sewer, the sewer plant pays the water fund for the usage.
So every time that we see a plant water usage fee under the sewer expenses, we can expect that to be showing as a revenue for the water?
That will be correct.
Okay, revenue for water. Okay, in two thousand and twenty-one budget report or annual report, water meters are expensed under both sewer and water and I was curious as to why there was a double entry. Wouldn't they just simply be underwater?
Stacy, can you answer that?
You can't have sewer without water.
This is a meter, this is the cost of the meter and you folks are not in, 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 excuse me, installing sewer meters. These are water meters. So why is a water meter expense showing up under sewer?
It's fifty-fifty.
No, at least, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Uh, is, the city manager said it's fifty-fifty because as Jim said, the city clerk treasurer, you have to have water to have sewer, so it's expensed.
Everybody's in the back and that water's coming in through the meter.
Right, and that makes sense.
They, they build a sewer based on water. And, and that's how it works.
Yes.
Okay. Number four, why did sewer administrative salaries increase by twenty thousand four hundred and fifty dollars in fiscal year twenty-one and water administrative salaries increased by twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars in fiscal year twenty-one?
That had to do with the distribution of salaries between.
Can't hear you.
Had to deal, do with the distribution of salaries between the administrative staff, which includes Jim's office and programs administrator, my wage and the director of public works wage, the foreman's wage and, and I think that's all that's attributed to that.
Before fiscal year twenty-one, where was that twenty thousand four hundred and fifty or twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-one allocated?
I think if you look in the clerk treasurer's section, you'll see that there was a decrease that's commensurate with the increase.
In what fund though?
Uh, look, look on the, in the administrative.
I think we take, in my office, we take fifteen percent of our salaries and split it between water and sewer, so. Five, seven percent goes to sewer, seven percent goes to water and we absorb the rest. Because we do water and sewer work. We calculate the bills, we send the bills, we collect the bills. And we figure that's worth fifteen percent of our salary.
So I'm asking what fund historically paid this sum of money for administrative salaries that is no longer being paid?
Well, speaking from my office, up until then, I absorbed it all in my office.
Yeah, take a look at.
And decided I wasn't gonna do that anymore because I do water and sewer work.
And you'll see that on page twenty-two under city treasurer salaries.
So was the budget for the town put together in such a way to anticipate the transfer of these monies?
I guess the best way to answer that is yes, it's all, it's all in our budget. It's there for anybody to see.
So you're saying that on page twenty-two, I will find the decreases in the treasurer's salary, the program director's salary, the director of public works salary, and there was another one that you listed that I wasn't able to jot down.
The biggest one you're gonna see are the three people that are employed in the city treasurer's salaries. You'll see that number goes down.
Next question, why were retirement benefits for the water fund nineteen thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars above budget in fiscal year twenty-one? Wouldn't that be something that would be quite predictable?
Not, there was a year that we transitioned to allocating the funds. It was kind of like how you broke it down, Laurie. Everything used to be in the back of the budget under, under personnel. And then we, we allocated everything under each department. It used to have one section, it was all health insurance, one big item in the back of the budget, the way they used to be done. Then they decided, we decided, the manager decided, to allocate the expenses to the department. So that is why you see it in the water and sewer. So retirement, health insurance, because it used to be like one big, um, one big, I, I, I can't think of the terminology, you know.
Well, department I do.
Department, whatever, now it's allocated to each department.
Well, we're using my department example. Fifteen percent goes to the water and sewer, seven and a half to water, seven and a half to sewer, vacation, holidays, big time insurance, fifteen percent of that goes to sewer and water.
And nine percent of the pension.
Yeah, anything that's.
Yeah, the pension's about nine percent.
You're right, Jonathan, the city has to put in its nine percent, you're right. We chose to do that to get a better handle on when it comes to budgeting. You know your expense for each department. There used to be, we had a budget presented where all these personnel expenses was in one section. It wasn't broken down per department and it just helps with proper accounting and budgeting and things like that.
And I understand that and I don't necessarily just agree with that in principle.
That's proper accounting procedure.
And like I said, I don't necessarily disagree with it. The difficulty that I'm having is that you're, you're, part of your loss that you suddenly had that the city is, is claiming they had in two thousand and twenty-one is related to the shifting of these expenses over that historically did not occur. And so you've got, you know, twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand, nineteen thousand and the list goes on. I mean, it adds up. And so this loss that you're seeing in two thousand and twenty-one is enlarged, is, at least, these are contributing to it. I'm not gonna say they make up the lion's share of it because I haven't done the math, but they do contribute to it significantly. The next question I had is why is.
How many more questions, because, I mean, I, I don't want to be here for three hours, I'm sorry.
I understand, but the next, the, the next question is why is the town paying ninety-three thousand and seventy-four dollars for a water tower maintenance contract when there is no water tower yet and this amount has been paid in fiscal year nineteen, fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one? In fiscal year nineteen, it showed up under debt service for some reason and then under fiscal year twenty and twenty-one, it showed up under capital expense.
We do have a water tower. We do have a water tower. It's on the west side and it's the annual maintenance work. Mr. Burnier, can we?
Okay, so there's another water tower that exists right now besides the proposed one?
The west side of town, the water tower over there, we entered in a fifteen-year contract with a utility company to maintain that tower at ninety-three thousand and change for five years and it considerably reduces down to below thirty thousand, I don't know, twenty-five thousand a year for the remaining portion. They come in, they inspect it and in fact, they're gonna be painting it this year, so that's what that is.
One of the issues is that in your town report, the budget for that year was two thousand and the numbers we made is ninety-three.
Well, because we had, we had funds in there already, so I reduced the amount that we budgeted because we knew we had funds.
They have a sinking fund for it or something, but it's wordy.
The actual number came in at ninety-three where the budget was fifty and that was what caused me to take a, a step back. And then there are principal reductions to debt and there's like three or four of them. And there's a huge disparity between fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one. And I'm curious, what is causing the principal reductions of these particular? Like there's a, a bond principal amount under the, a water debt service, there's a RF three one twenty-nine under the water debt service, there's a RF three zero nine five water well principal and they're a lot larger in twenty-one than they are in twenty. And what, what's causing that to happen?
Either that was paying off or as the, as is mentioned here, there was slight improvement in cash inflows due to debt obligations being put on hold by the state for COVID purposes. So you've got a combination of things that are happening there.
So in twenty, the debt obligations were less because of COVID and so then when you see the larger numbers in twenty-one, it's going back to its normal level? Is that what you're saying?
It could very well be just that.
It's the sinking fund for ninety-five thousand. It's sinking funds for ninety-five thousand.
I think, I think we're at the point where I think you need to put your questions in writing and send them to the city manager. I think it's gotten to that point.
Why would you have to do that?
Because you're at, I mean, as I said at the last meeting, we as a council rely on the people we hire to run the day-to-day operations of this community. It's not up to us to know every minute detail. I mean, we go through the budget during the budget process. We sign off on the expense report. I mean, we get these reports, they're posted on the internet. Right here, we get this and our job is to look at this for expenses. When it comes to paying the bills, I come in and I look at the bills for the week. I try to come in every week to look at the bills. But to go into all the minute details of everything that's being asked, that's why we hired staff. That's why we have people running, you know. The council, yes, is supposed to have knowledge, but not the minute, down to the details that I think you want. Those are operational questions and that's why we have professionals. Public Works Director, Clerk Treasurer, City Manager, you know. That's why we have the professionals running the day-to-day operations. We are a city manager, mere form of government where duties are assigned to the manager per state statute and that's what we rely on.
And Mr. Manette, I will send my questions to Ms. Dolgan. I, I can't, I can't get over the fact that even after Ms. Peterson said that there was some time in the past where there was a little bit of confusion, but now nothing is being held out as a three percent rate increase, that Ms. Dolgan then addressed this meeting and the people watching online and once again said, we are doing a three percent across-the-board rate increase. I mean, it's the lack of transparency, Mr. Manette, that's causing the high anxiety. There's a lot, it's the lack of transparency that's causing the distrust.
Okay, okay, all right.
I'm gonna call for votes.
I'm, I'm, we're calling for a vote. No, we're done. I had on here a vote, a vote to either increase or to not increase. I had a vote on here. Someone wish to make a motion regarding the rates? Okay, there's no motion to increase the rates at this time. All right.
Mr. Mayor, with that in mind, what, what are the next steps? Are you gonna try to have a revote next time or is it?
No, I don't plan on having this on the agenda until budget time.
So from the town meeting?
Which will be, not town meeting, it'll be November. We will have this where we will discuss the rates, a budget will be proposed. There should be proposed rates to cover the expenses at that time.
So it's table for now, Mr. Mayor?
Well, there's no motion to table, I'm just not gonna put it on the agenda.
Gotcha.
It's one of the few things I can do is not put things on the agenda. All right, moving on. The next item is a conflict of interest policy review.
So, okay, so I had asked to have this on the agenda just because I think, I think it was signed by the council in two thousand and seventeen and I think it's just sort of been there as a policy as we go along. It sort of didn't surface until I sort of became the middle of it a few meetings ago. So I just thought it'd be a good idea to just say, I'm not advocating for it, against it. I have no intention to try to change it. I just wanted to bring a couple of things to our attention. One of them is on Article Six that says that, you know, if someone feels that they have a conflict of interest or a perceived conflict of interest, they can state that and give the reason why. Also, any council member can also bring up and say that they might think somebody has a conflict of interest. So if that happens, so if someone just says, I have a conflict of interest and this is why and, you know, I'm reclusive myself, fine. If it's brought up that I think, you know, someone thinks they have a conflict of interest or a council member feels that somebody might have a conflict of interest or a perceived conflict of interest, they can bring that up and which is perfectly, you know, transparent and, you know, it's not a gotcha game. It's like wanting to keep things above board and transparent and, you know, things run the way they're supposed to. So if that happens, the council can then, the procedure is then to discuss it and to say, you know, so why do you have a conflict? And, you know, explaining and they can either decide that a person, they think that a person does or think that a person doesn't. The important thing though is in the procedure of that is that if someone feels that a council member, you know, council member feels that another council member has a conflict of interest, that has to be stated before discussion. And if, if it's not stated and no one thinks there is and through the course of discussion, what's ever on the agenda and in the course of that discussion, it surfaces that somebody may think that a council member has a conflict of interest, it can then be stated then, oh, you know, Jesus Melissa, we, you know, we think you have a conflict of interest and blah, blah, blah. Again, then it would kick in to you, discuss it, is it, you know, do, do you have a conflict? What are the circumstances? Yeah, we think you do, no, you think you don't. That's the process. The important thing to remember is that conflict of interest, that anyone feels someone or perceived conflict of interest is brought up at discussion or during discussion. It is not brought up after the action. So conflict of interest, if someone thinks you have a conflict of interest, they don't wait until you've already voted. It comes up before the vote. And I think that's really important to remember. The other thing that I, is interesting in the conflict of interest policy, you know, every organization has their own and I'm sure this has been vetted by the, you know, all the legal people and things. My experience with on the boards that I've been on have always been, it's been a financial interest in whatever's going on. Do you have a financial interest? Ours says a direct or indirect, personal or financial interest. And I'm sorry, before it's always been like a financial gain, what are you gaining? Are you gaining money out of it? Ours is direct or indirect, personal or financial interest. So that covers, and then I said in the other meeting that, you know, it's our broad policy. So that covers, and when I said in the other meeting that, you know, it's our broad policy, that covers a lot of things. Because interest isn't spined. So, I mean, if someone really wanted to take this as it's written and really take it for, you know, really expand it, if someone's running for office, and they have an issue they're running on, and they have an interest in that issue, they're ethically according to this, once they hit the council, they wouldn't be able to do anything about it because they have a, they have a personal interest in it. So, you know, we're a small community. We all are involved in a lot of different things. So we just need to be aware that if we have a personal or indirect interest in something, we're not supposed to be, unless we can prove that we're not biased. So, again, not advocating that we change the policy. I just want us all to be aware of it. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, the next item is new business. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I've got a special event permit request. Lawson's Finest Liquids, they're doing a, looked like a sampling, tasting, sampling at the Newport Country Club on July fifteenth. Don't need approval, I just need the council approval for that one.
Do we sign it? Just a motion?
Just a motion on that, I'll sign it.
So let's have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make that motion to approve that special event for Lawson's Finest Liquor.
Motion made by Mr. Charbonneau. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Pedersen. This is for the special permit, event permit for Lawson's Finest Liquor, say, whatever they call themselves, to be held at the country club. So a motion made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries.
And the other thing, I've got a couple vendors' permits. One for Mr. Rick Lansing. He's serving pretzel, cotton candy, candied apples, and that type of thing under a tent. For the weekend of July fourth, for whatever's going on at the park. He's paid the fee, he's got all the documents. And you can do these together. The other one is from Greg Silvestri, the Smoking Joe Ellis. I think he's been here before. This is a six-month, and he just wants to go to wherever, whatever they have in advance at the park or wherever and set up.
So we need a motion to approve the two vendor permits?
Yeah, you just approve two vendor permits together. Both these people have been here, been here before, I believe.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve those two vendor permits.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, made by Mr. Charbonneau, seconded by Mr. Wilson. Discussion? Any of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Any other new business? Mr. Charbonneau? Mr. Wilson?
Only new businesses. I'd like to give kudos to Public Works and the Rec Department for the Memorial Day Parade. An event ran smoothly. The only little hiccup was the P.A. system, which I guess you're getting a new one. Got it for the park. The ironic thing is Mr. Johnson had tested it at what time? Eight in the morning, and then had decided not to.
The one guy tested at nine o'clock, working in the.
Yeah, and so, but other than that, it was great job by everybody. Tom was right out there directing traffic. Mike was at the park making sure everything was set up. So it was a great event, you know, great way to honor our veterans. And I mean, I'm, and the people who paid the ultimate sacrifice so that we can enjoy our freedom. That's all I had on new business. Any, any new business?
No, thank you.
Anything?
I just wanted to make sure people were aware of the June fifteenth Community Summit update. We've got a list of people that are going to be making presentations to talk about what they're doing. The whole thing is remote. Hopefully, we'll get some people participating. You're going to hear updates from all the city departments, the Memphormaog Watershed Association, the Planning Commission, Heat Squad, the Downtown Organization, Rural Community Transport, Memphormaog Community Maritime, and the Northern Star, Rural Edge, SASH, the Bylaw Modernization Project, and the Grandstand. So some nice events, some nice initiatives that are happening in the city. And hopefully, this will be like a one-stop shop. It's funded by the USDA through the RCDI grant, which is really great. It's their third one doing this. Hopefully, next year, we'll be in person and be able to offer some refreshments. So happy to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, old business?
Mr. Charbonneau?
Mr. Wilson?
No.
The only old business I have is, a few meetings ago, the council approved the city applying for an airmark from Congress in Welch. We received a letter that we were one of the fifteen projects chosen to move on to the next round. He had, according to the letter, he had a hundred, about a hundred, a little more than a hundred requests. And he chose the Grandstand project as one of the fifteen to move on. So the way it does, it goes to House, the House appropriations, and then Senate appropriations in Washington. They have to, it has to go through a long process. So it's got a long ways to go, but he recommended it, which was good news.
Mr. Mayor, that's fifteen projects in the month, I take it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, fifteen projects. I think he had fifteen he could choose. Sanders had fifteen, and Leahy had fifteen, but his were months ago. And so we did receive a letter, so that was some good news that it's moving on to the next step. That's all I had on the old business. Any old business?
No, thank you.
Anything? Okay, the next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be Monday, June twentieth, two thousand and twenty, at six thirty P.M. And now we do need executive session to discuss the contract, one VSA three thirteen A one.
I make motion for the board's specific finding that premature general public knowledge of the subject of the anticipated executive session tonight could clearly place the board and/or persons involved at a substantial disadvantage.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made by Mr. Vashon, seconded by Mr. Wilson.
Or John Dooley?
I heard John, yeah. So a motion made and seconded. Discussion?
I see on the agenda that there is a possibility of a vote.
I expect action on that. I do.
I love action.
I expect action on it.
He just loves sitting in the lobby.
And the way we're going to do it is, we're going to go into executive session, we will come out, we'll go back in, and we'll come out for each item on the executive session.
Can you explain what the other two are?
I can't talk about what they are.
And with respect to the contract, can you describe whether or not it's with respect to labor or with real estate or anything?
It's a contract. It's a contract. I can't go into details. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So a motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, made by Mr. Vashon, seconded by Ms. Pedersen. Discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're going into executive session.
Executive session on record.
Yeah. I mean, we're flip-flopping from the longest to the quickest, you know.
It's because we put chairs up here.
Yeah, we sound excited. I didn't know that, did you?
Anyone else out there?
I guess we don't want to come in.
Yeah, they're talking, and John Holland.
Well, they can miss the vote.
Yeah, okay. Yep. All right, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make that motion that the city enter into an agreement with pilot agreement with North Country Hospital.
Kevin, can you speak up a little?
Make the motion, City of Newport, enter into the pilot agreement with North Country Hospital and authorize the city manager as a senior tour.
Yeah, so a motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, made by Ms. Charbonneau, seconded by Mr. Wilson. A little, please let me explain.
Sure.
It's the Payment and Law of Taxes Agreement. The hospital pays the city a payment in lieu of taxes. This is something that's been going on for many, many, many years, and it had to be renewed. And it started originally, I believe, with the Medical Arts Building, which used to be taxable, then the hospital bought it, and then they entered into an agreement.
You answered my question.
Okay, so a motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. This copy, if the press, they can have. You can have this if you want it. Joe, he owes not too old.
I have my own sources.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now we need a motion to go into executive session to discuss the real estate purchase and lease options. One VSA, Section three thirteen A two. So, motion made by Mr. Vashon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. I expect action.
Yeah, I still have on part two, but oh, it's part one.
Continuing saga.
Yes, I always do, I do know.
Okay, we're back from executive session, and we do need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve, subject to review and approval by the city attorney, the city's release of its access easement and right-of-way through the built-by-Newport property at four fifty Main Street by quick claim deed to Newport Furniture Parts Corporation, NFPC, in exchange for NFPC's conveyance to the city of easements over two fire hydrants and associated water lines on the same property by easement deed, including the posting and publication of the notice of sale, municipal real estate, for the quick claim deed, and to authorize the mayor to execute the quick claim deed, releasing the city's access easement rights on the property to NFPC, as well as any other related closing documents. If no petition is submitted, objecting to said conveyance.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Also.
Made by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau. Discussion on the motion.
Just a question of whether or not there's money involved in this exchange or not.
There is, thirty-five hundred, that the city will be receiving.
Okay, thank you.
But it has, this has to be posted for thirty days before anything can be signed. It's a requirement. So this will be posted for thirty days. It's just like when we, it's just like the thirty days for the property we talked about before.
Yeah, all the property.
All property has to be posted whenever you sell something, either it's an easement or a property, it has to be posted for thirty days. So that's that. Any other discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, could you expand a little on what the right-of-way had been?
This is the, describe it best. If you go past the gateway, you've got the Newport Harbor Club condos, that little going over the railroad tracks, right, Tom? It's going right over the railroad tracks into the built-by-Newport. They've got a gate there now, but goes, but that's the whole area with the easement.
And the hydrants were in that, are in that space, and you just would like to be able to get to them, say, if there's a fire or something?
Right.
Okay, seems sensible.
Anything else? Then.
We'll pick around.
Yeah, we voted, yeah, we voted, yes. I'm getting tired, I can tell. Okay. The, now we need an executive session to discuss labor relations, one VSA three thirteen A one. We need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion for that we enter into executive session because specific finding that premature general knowledge, general public knowledge, the subjects of the anticipated executive session tonight could clearly place the board and/or persons involved at a substantial disadvantage. Title one, VSA three thirteen, subsection A one.
Motion made by Mr. Charbonneau. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vashon. Discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries.
You expect a, with, have any decision?
Don't know on this one. It said vote, but I'm not sure. I'm being very honest.
Well, if I'm going to stay, you can have a vote, right?
Well. There's a second one. I wasn't reading properly. Go ahead.
I motion to enter the executive session to discuss the labor relations agreement. Title one, VSA three thirteen A one.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
We haven't finished our stories yet.
What?
We haven't finished our story.
Oh, you're still telling stories? This one took long.
So, tell me, are they about us?
No. All right, we're out of executive session at eight forty-one. There will be no action taken. No action taken on this executive session. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn at eight forty-one.